Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education special meeting this evening. We'll begin with a silent prayer, especially for all the victims of these awful tornadoes and tragedies. Commissioner Sweeney, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Fegano?
Present.
Commissioner Serrano-Ladorno? Commissioner Stengel?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present. We have a quorum. Thank you. Commissioner Vanstone, public address.
Madam President, I'd make a motion to suspend the regular business to hear from the public regarding tonight's special meeting items only.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if staying, motion carries. First person from the public, Mr. Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I just wanted to begin, I know it's been awhile since I've been here, and I would like to thank the Madam President, and I think it's the first time I've spoken since Dr. Ruffin has been here, and I would like to thank you for your work that you've been doing since you've gotten here. Item number two on the Committee of Finance, I think is a no-brainer. If it gives you guys any comfort, from what I've heard this afternoon on TV, the state has come to some sort of agreement on the budget. You know, nowadays, you know, until the final vote has gone through, you know, that's all we can hope for, but I think it was progress. I think hopefully it makes our job easier, but as the transfers, we need to do whatever is best to suit the needs of our students and our children. You know, as a lot of you know, that our teachers and our staff are doing the best they can. We all know that our students, some of which come from homes where parents aren't always there, the only education and teaching that they get is from our staff, and you know, we need to continue that. We're finally starting to see the successes. You've seen how many of our kids are going to colleges of big names, and I think that, you know, that's commendable from our staff, our administration, and this board doing whatever it needs to do to help our city staff in teaching our kids. Item number one on the agreement with the Wendell Cross, I think that we need to finally get this project rolling. I have to commend the school inspector's office and his entire staff on working so hard. You know, as we know, this has been a long process. I could tell you that our school inspector used to be in contracting, knows his way around what we're doing here. Is, I would have to say, is saving the city countless money between having to hire somebody such as ONG or people to come in and tell us how to do a project. I think that him and his staff have done a commendable job and have been doing it for half the price that what we could have ended up paying a private contractor to do. So I think that that's commendable. On the part of the other half of the swing space, I think that that is a perfect spot. I could tell you as somebody who has worked down there, I've seen a lot of progress down there. I worked at Duggan School. There was a lot of rhetoric that came out, you know. People don't like change, and I understand that. I don't always like change, but sometimes it's pretty good. Some of the rhetoric that came out was that Duggan School is in constant lockdown, which is untrue. Duggan School has only had one lockdown. It shouldn't have been a lockdown, in my opinion, because it was a bear that was sighted at West Side Middle School. Now, I mean, I'm a heavyset person. Some people tell me I'm built like a bear. If I can run 90 miles an hour, I mean, maybe there's a chance that I might get down that way. But other than that, you know, what appears to me is that people mistaken our lockdown drills and our safety drills that not only us, but everybody in the city does. We have a very excellent Director of Security, Mr. Herman, comes to the schools unexpectedly, which he should, to train us in protecting our students. Sometimes I think people get the misconception that there's a lockdown. Like I've said, there's only been one lockdown down there. It's a very quiet area. I gotta tell you, when I was working down there, when the old Brooklyn School was down there, I used to walk down by myself down to the Brooklyn Bakery. You know, I mean, I do like my sweets. You know, I, you know, I didn't have to drive to get down there. I didn't have to worry about being attacked. You know, a lot of the misconceptions out there, a lot of the people that live down near that swing space are good people. They work hard. Yes, unfortunately, sometimes people get into disarray with trying to keep up their buildings, but these are hard-working old people, and I think that we need to move forward with this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who didn't have an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Madam President, make a motion to return to the regular business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if staying, motion carries. 1.1, Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends the Board of Education approve an agreement with Newfield Construction Group, LLC, for the construction manager at-risk services for the Wendell L. Cross Pre-K-8 School Construction Project. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. Discussion.
I just have one question.
Commissioner Ward and then Commissioner Vanstone.
I'm sorry, did you want to go first?
It's okay.
Can somebody just tell me what is the GMP? What is the guarant? Do we have a figure of the guaranteed maximum price? I couldn't find a number anywhere, so tell me how to derive it.
Mike, can you do the math for us?
Good evening. Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. As it relates to the guaranteed maximum price, there is not one yet established.
Okay.
That will come about as we go through the establishment of the specific scope of work for what ultimately we anticipate will be two phases of the project. And before giving the notice to proceed, there will be the establishment and the firm amendment incorporated into the contract which establishes that gross maximum price.
Okay, so that's why I couldn't find it. It hasn't been established.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. LeBlanc? I'm sorry, Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you. Michael, I'm just not sure who's gonna answer my question, so.
Okay.
It has to do with some tracking, contract language, et cetera. So I actually would like to hear from our potential supplier, but if you want to answer them, maybe that's okay.
I'm having trouble hearing you, Commissioner.
Either Michael or our potential supplier will answer these questions. So, and I would prefer to hear from the potential supplier. And it has to do with the contract language in 3.7.3 for updating, and it has to do with schedule and reporting of progress. How will the percentages of completed work be made tangible? You know, in my world, there's level of effort, which time equals percentage complete. I don't want that to be such. So how will we actually have a tangible number to say at any point in time, the percentage complete that we hear back on reports is actually the percentage complete?
Certainly, I can provide some comments, and there would also be a nice opportunity to introduce you to Tom DiMauro, who is the representative from Newfield Construction, who will be handling the project, overseeing the project from their end. As it relates to monitoring the percentage of completion of work, generally on a monthly basis, there's an application for payment that is submitted. It has a detailed schedule of items within that application for payment and reflects the work completed to date and the percentages that relates to the overall authorized component for each of those items. That information is, as a normal matter of practice, would be reviewed by our project manager on our end, as well as reviewed and certified by the architect. In this case, it'll be Friar, who will be fulfilling that role. And so, from the standpoint of validating it, tied into all of that is actual onsite visits that will be happening throughout the course of the project.
You're leading into one of my later questions, but I would also like to hear from Newfield on how. And I'm coming at this from a program management-type question to say, it's great to say, a month went by, we plan to do this much work in a month, and we did it, but that's not the way it happens.
Okay. First of all, Tom DiMauro, Vice President with Newfield Construction. Mike really addressed the payment portion of the percentage of completion, but on the schedule side, we develop a detailed baseline schedule that, it's in the bid documents, so the contractors are buying, we're buying that schedule as well as the scope of work. And that's monitored on a weekly basis by us in the field. It gets reported to the committee in our monthly report. We update the overall schedule, and that's really how we track the progress on the job. And it's very closely tied to the payment as well.
And that's why I ask.
You have Santiago, you have Mike Serrano from Friar looking at these payment applications and verifying that that work is in place and that percentage is complete.
And that's why I actually asked the question, because I don't just want the time and material here. I want to be able to say, yes, we may have scheduled X amount of work, but we only did this, so when it comes time for a progress payment, we're paying you for progress, not for time.
That's correct. You're paying for the work in place.
So how are we making that tangible so that not just this board, who will approve that payment at some point, Michael, will be able to say, yes, that much work has been done? If we just have a line item that says, we take it from you that 20% has been done, we're gonna pay you for 20%, how do we know we really did 20%?
Because through the process that Mike described, you'll have several people that will verify that.
That's people verifying. Will the schedule that gets delivered at the end have any sublines or activities that will say, we did this, we did this, we did this? And someone from the city can go out and say, yes, they did this, yes, they did this, yes, they did this. It equals 25%.
Yes, we will track the progress of the schedule, but is it directly tied to the pay apps? You know, there's multiple trades involved, so it's not every activity on the schedule appears on their pay app. So we kind of track them both as we go.
If it's not tangible, I'm gonna have a lot of trouble approving payments. I may be only one person, but if I can't put a tangible amount of work towards a progress payment, how do I know the progress was done?
Mike, does Santiago want to step in?
I am Santiago Palacios. I'll be the project manager, assisting the city and the Board of Education as the eyes of all of you in the construction site. So I'll be regularly onsite, if not 90% of the time onsite, verifying that the work they claim on a monthly basis is the work that we're paying for.
We're still talking about an arbitrary person saying work is done. How do we know tangibly the work was done?
Well, one other way to, for you to verify it would be for you to come on site and see it in person.
Well, I'm not a construction expert, which is why I want a schedule to list.
Of course.
And I'm gonna make this very simplistic. I put in brick number one, or I release drawing X.
Yes, so.
That's tangible.
Okay, so at the beginning of the job, before construction starts, the construction manager is gonna give us a schedule of values. The schedule of values will define every single task that will happen on the job site.
With a description of what that task is, a statement of work assigned to that task.
Exactly. And that schedule of values is reflected in the payment, in the monthly payment. So we keep track of the work being done at the same rate that we pay it, because those two schedules are the same.
So now you're making it tangible, which is what I've been trying to get an answer to.
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
I hope I was able to help with the answer.
In the end, I was helped, because I don't want just 18 sets of eyes telling me we're 20% done. I want to see that we had accomplishments. We had, in the design phase, we released X number of drawings. I don't need to know what those drawings are, but if the milestone payment says we will release 18 drawings at this point in time, we released 18 drawings, you get your progress payment. And if you don't release 18, even if it's 17, you're not getting it.
And another verification process is a monthly progress report that's provided by the construction manager, and we make that report available to all stakeholders who want to see it.
Okay.
Because, again, you're not gonna be onsite seeing it, but you will have access to that monthly report.
Again, I think we're getting much closer to saying, you're making a tangible milestone to say, we should write a check. And that's what I'm after. So thank you. A couple more, if I may, Madam President? I guess that's an okay. When we talk about schedule and schedule changes, because there was language in the contract for that as well, is there a schedule logbook that will be available that if one month I look at a schedule and something's supposed to complete in May of whatever year, and the next month I look at it and say it's gonna complete in June of whatever year, is there a logbook that will tell me why that slipped a month? Or am I just gonna magically get a new schedule that the end date moved out, and I won't know why?
Typically, when we provide the monthly update, we include a narrative that explains the differences and why they occurred.
Okay. But is there a logbook? Because usually, when you build a schedule, if you want to call it an IMS, there's a logbook to tell you why things moved. There's a signature cycle that says, we approved that those dates moved. Is there anything in place, and maybe this goes back to Mike, or Will, that will tell me why, not just in a narrative, but a logbook that states why dates moved?
We don't currently do that on any projects, but maybe something we can look into if that's what you need.
I'm not trying to create work. I'm just saying, I don't want to just get a PDF that one month I look at it and it says, "May 2020." The next month I get a PDF that says, "June of 2020," and I don't know why, for a finish date, or a start date.
What I can add is, the schedule is, maintaining the schedule is one of the, one if not the most significant items as it relates to the overall project, and I think both Tom and Santiago can speak to the fact that there will be weekly project meetings, there will be minutes of those meetings that will be taken, there'll be agendas for those meetings, and certainly, within that context, there'll be context put to, if there's any scheduling issues, how they're being dealt with, and ultimately, the objective of what needs to be done to get back on schedule.
I'm pointing more towards the log, because when all of a sudden we see that we're six months late, I don't want to have to go through six months times four of weekly reports to figure out why we're late. If you have a schedule log that says why you're late, that log will tell you why we're six months late. And they could be good reasons, they could be valid reasons, but at least it's a reason as to why we're where we're at, and that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I'm sure we can accommodate your request.
To some degree. Like I said, I'm not looking to create work. I'm not looking to put a new line item that you have to track something that we get a new bill for. That's certainly what I'm not doing. So that helps me understand this. But again, Madam President, if I may, I just have a couple more.
Certainly.
If you move down in the contract to 6.3, it's very similar to 3.7.3, and again, it goes back to progress payments, but it moves into more of the construction phase. And again, this is probably more important at the construction phase than the design phase, where we need to really know that what we're building is where we're supposed to be. I mean, I could get a weekly report from you to say, I was supposed to put up four walls, I put up four walls. Do I really know that, unless I go to a site survey? But if there's some sort of activities there that we can go back and look at that says, okay, and I'm really trying to make this just conversational, we did wall one, we did wall two, we did wall three, we did wall four, now we got four walls, progress payment. That's what I'm worried about. A weekly report doesn't validate that that really got done. You could write to me in a weekly report anything you want, but if we don't have our folks going out and saying, wall one got done, and I don't want to go back through it, et cetera, we write you a check. Or at least, whatever the progress, the payment, how that works, that's up to Michael. I don't want to know that part. But at least we know that our money is protected and that that progress is truly done. Because again, when it comes to six months down the road, and we claim all this work was done, and we magically find out it wasn't, I want that money back. I may not get it, but I want that money back, and that's where I'm going with this. We need real tangible milestones to make sure our money's protected. So that's kind of somewhere between you and Michael, and I'll look at Will also, but that's what I'm looking for, the assurance, that we truly have a schedule, we truly have milestones that are gonna protect our money.
And those will, they will absolutely be in place, and they will be monitored and verified diligently and regularly throughout the project. I think, you know, the accountable parties involved, there's many, but one that I think may speak to where you're going is the architect. So the architect is gonna design the project, and there'll be an elongated process to go through the development and then ultimately the finalization of the design plans. But once those design plans are complete and approved, it then is the construction manager's responsibility to build the facility exactly in line with what the architect's design specifications lay out for the project, and the architect will have a responsibility and an accountability to, again, it ties back, yes, to the application for payment each month, but they have to certify, as the certified architect, each application for payment, and again, verifying and certifying that the work that the construction manager has claimed has been done, has not only been done from a percentage of completion standpoint, but has been done in accordance with the design specifications.
Okay. So just so I can summarize my thoughts, percent complete's great, however, if you don't have some subactivities that creates that percent complete, it really means nothing to those of us on this side of the room. Basically, what it will, if there's nothing to create that percent complete, we have to take your word. Okay? So with, although we've done very well on the school side of on-time and under-budget or in-budget, other projects the city has run has not been that successful. So I'm a little concerned that we make sure we understand when something is checked complete and we pay someone as complete, it's validated.
Absolutely, and there will be a very detailed schedule of values, breaking out the components of the project, and appreciate your comments. As it relates to past projects, I will say, though, that, you know, the city is just coming off of an extremely successful project with the construction of the DPW facility. That was on-time, on-budget, and something that, you know, we're very proud of from the standpoint of how that project went, and, you know, it's our expectation that this project will follow suit.
Comment accepted, but I won't bring up Municipal Stadium. Last item is, we've had the one side of education buildings that we have not done a good job on. We've accepted completion with known issues. I can bring up the crack at Reed School. I could bring up some of the issues we've had here, at this building we're in tonight, and a number of other schools where things after the fact, we could not go after and say, there's a real problem here. Because we were under the gun to sign off the paperwork, to go back to the state for reimbursement, we did so with known issues. What is our, what is gonna be our recourse when, and I'll go back to Reed School, that the crack in the floor that was there the day we took acceptance of that building was not addressed? And it took years before it got addressed.
Yeah, and I think it speaks to the problem as far as, you know, and there's not an easy solution to this, but there, you know, we have the ability to withhold retainage for a period of time, meaning, you know, be it, generally it's 5% of the work. Again, that can be withheld for a period of time until all the punchless items have been addressed, and then they're maybe tied to that, and Tom, maybe you can speak to this, as far as the duration where there's essentially a warranty on the work that has been performed, but, you know, generally, once you get, be it a year out past final completion, with all of the punchless items taken care of, there's not much that can be done at that stage of the game.
Okay, I agree with you. However, in the case of Reed School, we really had gun to our head to sign off that as a completion. The construction took place before I was on this board, the acceptance took place when I was on the board. It was gun to our head to sign that off, even though we knew that crack was in the main lobby floor. We accepted that basically by signing it off to say, okay, we can't do anything about it. We should have been able to do something about it regardless that the calendar said we had to sign that off.
Yeah, just quickly, you know, we, I mentioned in the committee meeting, some lessons learned. As we put this contract together, we were very clear in the milestones and the timelines, and one of those clear elements built in was the closeout and the final completion. So we went over that language quite a bit with counsel, Mike, Santiago, and others, and one of the other elements we made sure is part of that is our team as well, so that we're, before we're taking ownership or we're taking it over, we're doing that thorough review, our guys are kicking the tires and getting through the buildings as well. So this project, in addition to involving Santiago, very closely has involved not just my team, but also the rest of the team. myself, but other members of our facilities team, who are looking over the specs as they come in, looking at that right now, and some of the work that's already been done by Friar, giving them back information about what we see from design versus reality, what we've experienced in our other buildings. So we feel that's going to put us in a much better position for the backend, but on the backend, we don't want to have a turnover that we're unsure of what we're getting. So we're monitoring along the way, as, as Mike and Thomas said, but more importantly, at the backend, we're not going to be receiving anything unless we are confirming, you know, the air conditioning works, the hot water is hot, and those sorts of things. So as, as, one of the things I've utilized in the past, what I call a kick the tires committee, where we literally, like locusts, will go to the, the building and just check everything.
Okay, great.
So the mechanical guys check the mechanical work, you know, Jason and his team will look at that, Chris and Tommy and his guys will go in and run the building as if, what would a custodian do? Is the closet where it should be? Is it outfitted the way it's supposed to be and those sorts of things? Will will check IT, John will check security. We'll be checking those things along the way and involved in the various meetings to review the specs and scopes, but then how does it feel, how does it work? Get Joe in the building as the principal and so forth. So those are things you want to be on top of, so whether it's the obvious crack in the floor, or whether it's frankly that the desks don't feel right, or whatever that is, we're going to then have that conversation, does that match the scope, does that match the spec, and whose fault was that, and those sorts of things? But we want to be very comfortable about that. And as Mike says, there is an opportunity where you're holding back funds, and the contract is very specific.
I did see that.
Payment's not made until all that's verified.
Okay.
So that is a huge part of the project, no question. Yes, there are some timelines and DAS rules and so forth, but we've carved out, we think, a reasonable time and a framework that everyone's agreed to, to make that happen.
Appreciate that. I'm, I'm certainly going to vote to move this forward, but I did have to raise those concerns, because it is history. Do not want history to repeat itself, so that's why I brought them up. I will be certainly voting yes on, on the proposal before us, but I did need to bring that up. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bagan.
Just one quick one, as a clarity. In my past life, I did a lot of construction projects. Our payment schedule against the values, will that be done via an affidavit process? So in case we need to go to court at some point, there is discoverable evidence?
Not an affidavit process per se, but they are signed, as Mike described the process, there's multiple sign-offs.
It will be discoverable.
Right. So there's signatures on documents and plans, there's signatures on invoices, and the way we've set it up is we've added a couple other layers. So in addition to Friar and Newfield doing their sign-offs, then Santiago, Raj, myself, Mike, we're other sets of eyes looking at it as well.
You guys are a human affidavit process.
Correct, but we'll have that documentation with the physical sign-offs.
You have the documentation that's discoverable in case we ever have to go.
Exactly right. And, and by the way, DAS won't accept the payment on their end.
Right.
Unless they have those pieces. So one of the critical.
That's another set of eyes looking at it.
Exactly. It's following all the DAS regulations, and we're mapping that documentation. We have a common portal that Friar, Newfield, Mike, Santiago, myself, Raj, all have access to.
Right.
So we all see the documents, we're marshaling them through.
Okay.
And we're saving them.
Thank you.
Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. Quickly, first want to thank Commissioner Vanstone, Tom Vanstone, for bringing that up about Reed, because I had those same concerns about the sign-off process when the project is complete. So you and I will be watching that closely. But refresh my memory, what is at risk? What does that mean?
From the standpoint of, there are provisions within the contract for damages, both as it relates to delay damages for completing the project in accordance with the guaranteed timeframe, and also damages for not completing the project within the guaranteed maximum price. So the risk in relation specifically to the guaranteed maximum price is, we're only obligated to pay up to the guaranteed maximum price. If ultimately the project comes in higher than that for all within scope work, then that risk in essential, essentially the cost is borne by the construction manager in that case.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of Newfield Construction, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to working with you.
Committee on Finance, Commissioner Awad.
Thank you. The Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the following transfers for the fiscal year budget 2018, 2019, as they have been laid out before you. I'll move that. If there's a second, then Doreen can go through it.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Doreen, did you want to just run through this? Or does anybody have any questions? Because if there's not.
No.
Okay, I just want to make one comment. I've been approached last week after our finance committee meeting, and again, tonight, this is this year's budget, the current year. These are transfers of surplus lines to cover deficit lines. That's why there's some in red and some in black. We are not laying off teachers, school psychologists, social workers, speech pathologists, or paraprofessionals. There are surpluses in those line items that are being moved to address shortfalls and other line items. So for those folks that are very concerned, as my daughter calls me here, if there are folks that are concerned that they're losing their jobs, that's next year's budget, and there are no plans for that. So this is a current line item transfer for this fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Thank you. Seeing no other items on the agenda, could I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Thank you. Have a nice evening.[1740.83]